All right, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dallas Baldry of HD Strategic Group, and I am very excited to be here with you this evening and have an important special guest. And I know a lot of you are familiar with Pastor Victor Martinez, but I'm excited to have a chance to speak with Victor, ask some questions. You'll have you'll have an opportunity to ask some questions as well. But I could tell you, got to know Victor here sometime middle of last year, and I have never met somebody so passionate about their city than Pastor Martinez. Now Victor, for those of you who don't know, has been a longtime resident of Minneapolis, specifically on the north side. I believe he has been over seventeen years there, very involved in the local community. He's the pastor at New Generation Church, where he helps many people in the community. He's also been a director of a local nonprofit. He's involved within different neighborhood communities, committees, and very, very passionate and inspired about changing the path that Minneapolis is currently on. And as a candidate for the city council in the fifth ward, I can tell you that there is nobody better to represent the people in the fifth ward or Ward five as Victor Martinez. So Victor, thank you for joining us this evening. Very excited to chat with you. How you doing tonight?
Doing good, doing very good and very excited. Just came back from a community meeting here in Williard. Hey, we had a recent violent carjacking in a couple of blocks from my house. And it came from a meeting that packed room residents just worried and just want to know more about what's going on and what's the future holds. So I'm really excited to be here, just came running and jumped right into this meeting.
Well, absolutely. And you know, I could tell you that one of the things about your background that that really inspires me and gives me confidence in you as not just a candidate, but actual member of the city council and getting things done is your leadership experience. I mean, you are a true servant leader with many different roles that you serve, from the nonprofit to your church and in the local community. Tell us a little bit more about your background, if you would have mind.
Yeah, so just a little bit about me, grew up in a single parent household. We moved every year, every year of our life and lived in North Minneapolis the last twenty-five years. Graduated from Patrick Henry's here on the north side, very familiar with faith leaders, our community leaders, activists in the community. And I really care about this community. I have a family here. I have a home here. I have a business here. I worship here. I play here. And I'm really invested in the community. My children are ten, eight and six. And so I think of everything around the community when I think about them right now.
Yeah, so add father to the to the leadership. I mean, that's that's as big as jobs it gets when it comes to being a leader. You know, with all, everything you have going on, I mean, you wear a lot of different hats. Why, why are you running? I mean, that's, that's, that's a tough, tough job out there. But what has made you decide to want to run here in the upcoming election?
Great question. I really love this community. I know it could be sunny like a cliche, but I really love this community. I know the community leaders here, I know the pastors, faith leaders, I know the business leaders, I know the community organizations. And 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 the great thing about running is you get to hear all their voices. And they all really come and taking us in the same direction, saying, now we want this, we want this. And then I asked, well, how do we get those things? And and I think I could provide those things for our community because I live here too. I want those same things as well. And I have a heart for the community. I think our community in our city is going the wrong way. I think we're extremely divided. We let our skin color, our race, we let our politics, we let everything get in the way. And we're extremely divided. And Ward five is actually the, you know, has the lowest voter turnout, struggles with the most, the most amount of poverty, most amount of gunshots. Everything is the worst in this ward. And and one of the things I've noticed is because we're so divided and we need leadership to bring us together. You know, I don't believe in cancer culture. I don't believe in calling people out. I believe in calling people in. And so that's where my heart is, and that's what I want to do in our city.
Well, I, you know, every time we talk, I hear the passion. And you know, I know that what you say is true and how dedicated you are to the north side specifically in Ward five. You know, one of the questions I'm sure a lot of people have is, okay, Victor, you know, you live here. You've done a lot for the community. You're dead. You know, you're dedicated, you're passionate. But and that's great, but what is your vision for 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 the north side?
So I was three things I laid out on my website and my communications is number one, obviously, public safety. And I don't think of public safety as in just the police or or just the community. But I think of public safety as all of us working together and building trust. Public safety does not work if you don't have trust. And so if our city isn't building trust, it's not fixing the problem of public safety. Our community here, by and large, especially the minority community, the African American, Somali, Mong, Latino, like which is seventy-five percent of North Minneapolis is people that are non-white. And and we want safety. We want to trust police officers. We want them to treat us with respect and dignity. We want them to have a good relationship with us. Every everyone on the Broadway and our business community wants officers, but but they also want to have a good relationship with them as well. And so I think of public safety as everything, building trust. So that's number one. Number two, I think that we need to declare absentee fathers a public health crisis. These mothers that are struggling with their young, young kids. It's these fathers that are on around and we need every layer of government to to really put attention there and help these families that are struggling, whether it's through mentorship or, you know, helping these fathers that are getting out of jail, have a relationship with their children. Because it is proven that if a child has a relationship with their father, it helps decrease their chance of them getting in trouble. And so declaring absentee fathers, public health crisis, it's something that I think is progressive. And it's something new. It's something we need to start talking about. Policy and government can't fix all our problems. They can only kind of help encourage society to work together to help fix those problems because it doesn't all land on government. They can't fix our family. They can't fix our broken relationships. All they could do is kind of encourage it to kind of go in the right direction, which has happened in the city of St. Paul in the past with the Mon community just about a decade ago, where the violent crime was raising in the Mon community. And the city of Minneapolis created some family friendly policies to encourage families to to kind of get to come together. And you know, ten years, fifteen years later, we don't see a Mon gang problem anymore like we were seeing back then. And so I think that a community encourages families and especially fathers to be active in their kids' life would be amazing. And it'll help society as a whole. And then number three, obviously, is community development. How every business corridor in our ward needs more investment and it needs, it needs to be able to make sense for the community as well. We want development that makes sense. We got the light rail coming. And and there's a good way of doing it that's going to help everyone as much as possible. And there's a way to do it that really has no meat to it. And it takes city leadership to put the meat on it. The light rail is coming and they're going to do their part. But the meat of it, like the vision around it, developing it, it has to come with city leadership. And that's really what we don't have right now. And that's what I want to do as well.
I appreciate you sharing that. And you know, I'd like to dive a little bit deeper and you know, start with with number one that you mentioned, the public safety issue. The trust and and you know, everything you're saying that, you know, it's needed, it's wanted, but there's got to be that mutual trust. I mean, what, how do we do public safety and specifically in Ward five? How do we do it better? And what as a leader do you think you can do to get that done?
Yeah, so I have a network of pastors that I belong to. And Juarez, Mexico, the city right across El Paso, about ten years ago, maybe fifteen, was one of the worst cities in the world with crime. And they had a cartel. Their crime was at another level. Their prisons ran drugs out of the prisons. It was just they had lines inside their prisons, okay, for the cartel members to have. And so it was really bad and the trust with the police wasn't there either. And police didn't want to get shot at and risk their life. And so there was just all this dysfunctional stuff happening. And and so the faith community got came together over there to figure out how to help the city fix this problem. Because you know, this public safety issue with lack of accountability and trust, it's nothing new. It's been around for quite a while, but some cities and some places seem to do it better than other cities like ours. You know, we've struggled for a long time. And so one of the things that they did over there that I want to implement here, I'm calling them fusion zones, for lack of better words. It's a place where businesses, nonprofits, churches could open their doors up to officers while they're working to either have their breaks, take, use a bathroom, in a place where they could relax and be able to just, you know, be in a good, warm, safe place specifically at night or the winters. Because there's only a couple of places on the north side that's open late. And and usually there's a lot of activity. And so it's really hard for our officers to have a chance to take a break. Imagine if you had a job and you never really got a break and the break you got, people are all talking to you and asking you questions, which happens a lot. And nobody likes that. And so we need our officers to have, be able to be in a good place. So I would want to see a business sign up, a church's faith community say, hey, we're going to host these officers in our, in our, in our church, in our community for a safe space for them, if you would. And let them see us, let them see us as humans and let us see them as humans and build relationship with them. Everybody wants to know their officer. And so there's that trust building. The second thing was that they had, they had motivational speakers coming to their shift changes at the precincts. And they would give motivational talks and encourage the officers. And these were community members that did the motivational talks. So the officers got to see someone that that was from the community and be able to build relationships. And these are people that were trusting the community, people that had good relationships, many of them were faith leaders. And so as their relationship was built, these officers would be able to confide in them later on. Hey, you know, I'm struggling with my marriage. I'm going through this or that. And be able to get a help address their, their soul, their emotional being. And that helped really change things around. And Juarez City is not alone longer one of the most dangerous cities in the world at all. And and not only that, but the program worked so well that they're trying to take it to the next level at the state, police state level. And so it has a lot of traction and I would like to see that, you know, starting on Ward five. And I think our, for the most part, our ward wants to have a good relationship with their officers. And we need to start there because if you don't start there with trust and with confidence in each other, everything else you build is like a house of cards that could just blow and fall over. So I believe that's what we need to start and that's where my vision is for public safety. I do believe in our staffing level needs to be higher. I talked to every single, I talked to every single business I talked to on Broadway in our business corridor, even in Glenwood, wants more officers. They want beat officers with beat officers are proven to build relationship with community better. People see them, they're walking out and about and every single one wants them. And the only way to get that is our staffing level. We are historically low. I think I just came from the meeting that said of actual officers you have out on the street is about two hundred fifty for half a million people. And so it's extremely hard to get them, get the nine one one to pick up. On my website, I have a video a couple of years ago of being involved in, my family was in the middle of a gun battle and calling nine one one, nobody picked up for about almost a minute. And so imagine those moments are really critical and we need the right staffing. I think that we could, we could walk and chew gum at the same time, get the staffing right as well as build relationship and practice accountability.
No, I love it. And you know, I really love about what you're saying is you actually have a plan. You know, so many people that are running for office or unfortunately, people that are already in positions of leadership in office, they'll talk, but they don't, when you ask them how they're going to do it, they don't, they don't really have a plan. And and I really appreciate that you have a well thought out plan and one that's worked in other places that, you know, had even higher crime rates and it's a well thought out plan. I love what you said about the house of cards. I mean, there's stuff you can do to put Band-Aids on, but what you're talking about is a permanent fix. And so, you know, I really like that. You know, going back to one of your last points about, you know, the issue with absentee fathers. You know, I think I know where you're going with that is the high youth. I mean, I know on the north side, there is a high percentage, I think something like thirty-five percent or twenty thousand people are under eighteen. And so I know you're focused on really helping build the community through the youth empowerment. Talk a little bit about that, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. There's a lot of groups in our community doing work to help our young people. Sadly, they're extremely underfunded. They, they, they need leadership to bring it together, you know. Public safety, it's a web and just like that is our young people are part of the public safety, are part of our family. If there's a saying in ministry, idle minds is the devil's playground. And so I get, so these young people, there's resources, don't get me wrong. The last few years, I've been fighting and we got some big stuff changed at the city hall that for the first time in like twenty years, they increased activities for youth in the city of Minneapolis for the first time in twenty years. And so don't get me wrong, there's things going. And now the problem is connecting these young people there because right now they're playing Grand Theft Auto. And right now they go get a car at fifteen years old, they drive, they steal, they carjack someone. They, they drive a hundred miles per hour where they get stopped, police grabs them because there's Hennepin County closed all their, all their, all their homes. These kids go right back to the house and mom's like, no, take them back. I mean, I can't handle them. And then like twenty-four hours later, he's stealing another car and it's just a cycle over and over. And so these young people need to have mentors, people to connect with them. One of my desires is to, the city of Minneapolis gives X amount of dollars, millions of dollars to, to the nonprofits in the community to give jobs to young people. And a lot of times I found out that those jobs aren't filled because they say that there's not enough employers that want to hire these kids. And so there's money left over on the table. And I'd like to create a youth development fund to be able to target our most at-risk kid. Like the city of Minneapolis, we all know those kids that are struggling the most. In fact, even our own block, we can, we know the houses, that kid in that house is going to be the next kid on the news. And so I want to be able to target those kids and say, hey, we have this pot of money. And how do we get mentors or coaches to to work with this child and help resource that mentor, that teacher or that coach to get that kid and work with that kid, to bring them into football, bring them into soccer, bring them into, so whatever it is. We have one of the best ski areas in our state here, right in North Minneapolis. But a lot of young people, they're like, I don't know about that. I don't know what that is. But once they, once they experience what sledding is down these huge hills, it's just super fun. And it opens the mind to the young people that there's more than just this bubble. Because when you talk to these kids that are in this cycle, vicious cycle of poverty, of pain, of suffering, they don't see anything else. They just see their problem. And you'll talk to them and they'll say, hey, I talked to this one young person one time who was offering me drugs at their corner store. And I said, hey, man, that stuff is going to kill you. And he's like, hey, I'd rather kill myself than let somebody else shoot me in the back of the head. I'm like, why? You'd rather kill yourself? And so did that logic and I explained to him, that doesn't make any sense. Why would you want to kill yourself? And he's like, oh, you're right about that. So these young people are missing someone to speak life into them, someone to speak encouragement into them. And so that's one of my other ideas is that we have to help our young people. Our seniors are scared of our young people. We have a high concentration of seniors in public housing here in North Minneapolis. And many of them are scared of our young people. And what if we created a system where these young people go and serve these seniors? And so and then put that money behind there. So those are some of my ideas around this progressive family agenda to really help the ones that are struggling the most in our communities.
I love it. I love it. And very powerful and definitely well, you know, well thought through. And and you know, I have no doubt that if somebody can make it happen, it is, it is you, sir. One of your goals, you know, that I saw for really helping grow the north side is rehab of West Broadway. Talk about your reason for that and what you think the positive implications could be.
So West Broadway is our only north side official business corridor and has been struggling for decades. And we have an opportunity through this light rail to really do it right. We can either hinder businesses for the next five years through this project or we could actually jumpstart our business over here. I know Glenwood also wants business, Lowry wants business, we all want business. And so when I talk to problem businesses, there's little accountability for them. Our city works in a very reactive manner that if there's no complaints, the city doesn't do anything about it. And so people get tired of complaining about the same problem, sidewalks that aren't shoveled properly for the snow, you know, drug selling in front of a business, you know, things that people get tired of it. So the people don't complain, the city doesn't do anything about it. And so you need someone to really be a watchdog. I remember two years ago on Broadway, there was, you know, here in Minnesota, we, when, when it's winter, I mean, at four o'clock it's dark. And kid you not, our main business corridor, Broadway, there was about a block and a half worth of lights that were out. Like there was this black pouch area in our, on Broadway, everything's light up. And then right here, the main corridor where our main bus transit goes through. I called the city, nothing. I called the community organization, nothing. It took almost two months, wow, two months to turn all those lights back on. And so if I, if I didn't advocate, nobody knew about it. Nobody fought for it. And so it starts with some real basic stuff like that. Let's get our lights turned off for crying out loud. And so, and so that's, that's really that simple. And then advocate for more lighting and more of our business corridors. I know Latrice of Utah in our northern ward is fighting for that. And I'd love to join her with that fight to spread that as big and bad as possible.
Great. And then, and then I know, you know, one of your focuses is job creation. And I think it all ties together with a lot of things you're saying, community development, you know, safer places, you know. All studies show that, you know, more jobs, it helps decrease crime. So so how does that play into to that, to that scenario?
It's really a cycle, man. It's really a circle, you know. And we know the chicken and the egg story. Well, guess what? Here it's pretty simple. Safety first, you build development, gives people jobs, makes people proud of their community. And but the opposite is true. The community, there's no, there's no betterment of the community, this tagging everywhere. You know, City of Minneapolis has a rule that within twenty-five hours tagging has to be taken down. And our business corridor, you know, has people that are in charge, are given money to be in charge of this. And so when you start getting buildings that are graffiti and left like that for months and months, then people are like, oh, I don't want to be around there. And then I'll start tracking people that say, hey, I could peddle the drugs here because nobody pays attention here. And then it just kind of snowballs the other way. And so you really got to get the ball of snowballing the right way. And and public safety is the start of that. You got to have an adequate police force. I know we have some people in our city that that don't want any cops at all. And, you know, I respected their thoughts and I'll respect them and I'll treat them with respect. But I believe that's completely what wrong the majority of the African American community here. For example, and Latinos, I would say Latinos and Mon, we're the same. They're over almost ninety percent of us don't want any less officers. We actually want more officers. We were frustrated that they don't answer. There was a documentary that just came out on Showtime, Boys in Blue. And I encourage everybody to watch that on the north side. It's on Showtime. It's a thirty day trial. You could try it so you could watch it. But that gives you a real point of what our community, the one that everybody says they're fighting for, our black brothers and sisters, like they want better relationship, they want officers. And so if we respect that and listen to those that are hurting the most, I think the decision is really, really clear about which direction we should be going.
Appreciate that answer, really do. And yeah, I'm excited to have you get in there and really start implementing and making these changes. But let's, let's shift focus to another, you know, issue I know on the north side is, you know, is there is, is, what are your thoughts on rent control?
You know, thank you for asking that. I'm really against rent control. I don't think it makes any sense. There's no city in America that's been proven that it works. And and so the debate right now is either three percent, basic three percent, which doesn't make any sense because historically, the last ten, fifteen years, on average, the rent has only grown like two point something percent. And so that doesn't make much sense. The people that advocated is because there are some building owners, housing providers that that are abusive, that are abusive, that they don't, they don't pay, they just slap a, slap a quota pay on, no new amenities, nothing. And and they go from like a thousand twelve hundred to like a thousand seven hundred, just like that. And they're abusive to, and it forces people out. And I think there's ways to deal with that through our licensing. I mean, what's the point of having rental license if you don't use it for any, any accountability? And so I think we should target those landlords that are being abusive to make it right, not blanket on everybody. Because, you know, the, there are those caps that are so low, you know who it hurts the most? It hurts small mom and pop people, the American dream, right? Buy your house and own a property and it hurts them because they, they don't have, they don't have staying power. The big ones, they have a lot of staying power. They could, they could leave one of the houses vacant for a year and they'll be fine. You know, a small mom and pops, you know, one, one or two months of not being in a random place can really get them in a hole. And so what other people are talking about is, no, this cap even lower than three percent. This cap at, which does not make any sense. St. Paul passed it. And now they're all backtracking because all the developers are trying to provide housing because, right? One of the reasons housing goes up prices is because there's a lack of housing. And so the only logical way to do it is create more housing. But there is a time where it's like you have to invest a lot of money. And if you're putting policies like this, that banks will not give money to the developers to build. You can't build the house and the buildings, apartment buildings, doesn't make any sense. And so St. Paul, you see what's happened and you want to follow the same track. I mean, smart people look at them, learn from their mistakes, but wise people learn from the mistakes of others. And so let's learn from them. And that's why I'm against it. It doesn't make any sense. There's no proof that it works. And encourage more development. I'd like to keep our older housing. That's one of the ways you keep rents lower. But if you're destroying old, older complexes that still work, right? And if you're not taking care of your old building, that's a problem too. The city should help take care of buildings. I know we had a twenty building unit here, apartment unit that wasn't maintained properly. And now that's going to probably be tear down. So you just lost some of the most affordable housing in the community. And so that, that's, that needs to be prioritized, not, not rent control.
Got it, got it. Appreciate that. A question that came in was, why, why do you believe or why is there a lack of interest from businesses to be on the north side?
It's really simple. You ask all of them. Sammy's Eatery, which is an iconic spot on Broadway right now, a black owned man that goes to church two blocks over. Everybody knows him. Every politician and their grandma goes and takes a picture with him. Okay, this is the guy, and he just got broken into like a couple of months ago. They ripped his window, they ripped his door. And they took a couple hundred, I think they told, they told me that they, they only took like a couple of dollars. Like they don't even have a lot of money. And this is a respectable place that everybody in the community loves. And so it happens to all the businesses. You know how much it costs to put a window, a full-size window, it costs thousands of dollars. And you can, and insurance only covers so much and then you're out of your own pocket. And so the ones that really could afford to stay are the franchises, right? And and but the mom and pop, they can't survive. I mean, it's really difficult. If you don't have safety, you can't survive as a small business. It costs too much. And so that's why people move. I mean, I think Sammy, from my understanding, he wanted to start a full-fledged restaurant, but he didn't look on the north side to plant it. He went somewhere else. Wouldn't, it's not the safe place, it's not a good place for business right now in our community. And I know every business person on Broadway, right? I know businesses on Glenwood, they all tell me the exact same thing. It's not that difficult. If you don't make it safe for them, if you're not helping them stay in business, then why do they want to be there? They'd rather go to the mall, the suburbs, somewhere where they know their, their stuff isn't going to get stolen or broken into.
I know that makes, makes sense a hundred percent. And thank you for that question. So, you know, a question that I have is with all the division currently in the city, and I don't mean just within the people, I mean, you know, from city council being at odds with the police department, with being at odds at other, you know, departments. What makes you feel or what, what experience do you have that you believe you can go in there and unify everybody?
I think it starts with respect and treating people with respect and not, and not treating them like they're the problem. You can have differences of opinion. That's okay. We can disagree. We can have different faiths. That's okay. You know, we can have different customs. That's okay. That's number one, treating people with respect and not demonizing anybody. Number one, number two, you know, it's a pastor and I'm a people person. I love being around people. People energize me, you know. And so be for me to build a relationship with, with a Hennepin County commissioner, with a park board commissioner, a school board commissioner, like that's as natural. I just do that. And I seek those relationships out. And I, I try it now. I do it now the last couple of years. Some of, some of those commissioners don't want to talk to me, don't want to sit down with me. They don't value maybe much of this community because they have other pockets, you know, Hennepin County Commissioner Irene Fernando. You know, she covers a huge area and the reality is that our community here doesn't get a lot of her attention. Doesn't mean she's bad or anything. I think that if I was a leader, I'd look for her and be as a leader, as an elected official, maybe there'll be more attention that I could bring from her to this community and have her be more active in this community because all the other parts of her county are pulling her that way. And they're engaging her. But if we don't engage her, you know, it's, it's hard to blame her, right? She, she goes, you know, an elected official goes where they are wanted. And so that's what I would do. I would seek them out. I go to their meetings sometimes and just to say hi and just be a fly on the wall as he was going on. Because as an elected official, people think you should know everything. And I try my best to at least know where to point people to. I did that very well and when I was, my whole life, just understanding how things work and pointing people to the right place. So that's where it starts, mutual respect, respecting each other. You could disagree and say, hey, I don't like this idea and I think this idea is wrong. But if you don't treat people with respect and know how to look at them in the eye and connect with them, I think that's the problem. I've talked to other elected officials from the past that have retired. You know, there's a huge wave of baby women retiring in your community of leaders. And they tell me the same thing, Victor, we used to know each other, we used to go out to eat. We would date bed on issues, but we used to be friends and talk about issues and how to fix this. We would date, bet on issues, but we used to be friends and talk about issues of how to fix this and how to fix that. We don't have that right now. We don't have that at all right now.
Well, it sounds like, you know, you want to really be the voice of reason and the voice of respect. Because, you know, if, if some of these, these groups at odds just unify together for the sake of the city, then a lot can get done, you know, a lot of different things can get done and for the good. Victor, let me ask you, you know, I, I really appreciate your time. I know we're, we're getting close to time. But I wanted to ask, you know, for those that are watching this, you know, they, they like you. They, they think you're their guy to represent them on, you know, on the north side, Ward five, and they're going to get behind you. Right now, where we're at in the election cycle, if they want you to be the guy who represents them, what is the best way right now today that they can help you be that representative for them come election time?
Number one, you go on my website and sign up for, for updates. I don't know if you could put that up on there, for those that aren't getting updates right now. You can go on my website and just put down information, working, working with your team and working with my, with my, my, my team as well, both of our teams together. Keeping you informed. There is caucusing. If you don't know what caucusing is, it's basically a bunch of people in the community say, hey, we like this guy and we want you to support this guy. And Minneapolis, you run as a DFL. And so I'm running for their endorsement. I missed it. I missed the last time by four votes, giving 60%. And so if people are here listening, they like me, they want to see me succeed, and the vision that I have for our community, they sign up for caucusing with the DFL comes wrong. There's no other party here in Minneapolis. So you, it's only one way to do it. It's really the kind of the moderates and the progressive. And if you believe you're a moderate, I'm a moderate. And so I'd love your support there. Financially, you could give, you could give up to $600 per person or $1,200 per household. That would be huge if you could support by giving. Maybe you don't like getting out, you don't like being in front of people. But you could support by financially giving. You could go to our website, just click on the link to give and you can give that way as well. And if you want to, if you're hyper involved and you want to get involved and help me out, volunteer, connect with me, say, hey, Victor, I want to, I want to get more involved in your campaign. How do I help you? I would love to have you helping. So those are really the three ways that I could use really your help right now.
Well, great. And you know, we'll have this recorded on the, the website. And so what we'll do is everyone who's attended, we'll go ahead and get you out the link to make sure you have Victor's website. I would follow you, you know, follow Victor on social media. He's got a great, great social media channels. Yeah, I love your Facebook and, and your, your introduction video, your announcement video. That, that was phenomenal. I love it. So make sure you're following him there. And like Victor said, you know, even sharing with others, you know, sharing this, this webinar, sharing his, his pages, that's what's going to get the word out. Because, you know, we need to bring awareness and let people know there is an alternative to the, to, to what's being, what's going on now. And there is a change that's needed and Victor is the guy. And so, you know, we encourage everybody to do that at a very, very minimum. And like he said, you know, if you can contribute money, I know even as small as, you know, five bucks, it helps. Everything adds up. Unfortunately, when it comes to elections, it does take money. You know, it does take money to get, get the word out. And I know Pastor here will make sure every dollar is utilized for that effort. But if you don't have capital, then, then you can commit time, you know, time capital is important as well and, and helping spread the word. And so I know, Victor, you would really appreciate that. And Victor, what is, what's the best way they can reach you if, if, if they want to get in touch with you?
My campaign number is 612-567-7657. I think I could, you could put that up there, 612, see here, 612-453... Oh, sorry. I'm already saying it wrong now. 612-567-7657. You can call me there, text me there as well, or my website, victorthenumberfourcitycouncil.com.
Perfect. And, you know, check your emails. We will get you out a thank you email. But we'll, we'll include this information as well if you didn't get a chance to, to take a look. So I really appreciate it, Victor. And thanks, everybody for joining us.
There was one question, can I answer? There was, I see one question on texture. What are some of our ideas about getting our youth more places to hang out that are safe? Absolutely, absolutely. I think that through that, through that mentorship and through that youth development fund, I think that will be a great way to resource community members to reach out to our youth and connect them to those places. They definitely need a lot more safe places. Our parks are not safe for them, kids that are playing in the park. And then someone that doesn't like them comes up. So I'm definitely up for that. And I'm working with Rebecca Thompson with the Park Board, North Commons, to create exactly that space. So I'm pushing them forward, asking a lot of questions. And so thank you for asking that question.
No, great, great question. Thank you very much for that. And Victor, we're going to have to do this again. And I know that the individuals on here will probably want to share this. So they'll have more questions and, and we'll fire them at you. You did a great job. I appreciate your time and really looking forward to watching you on this journey and leading the way and truly helping those in Ward five on the north side.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right. Thanks, everybody for joining us. Appreciate your time and thanks for your support for Victor. Make sure to share and Pastor, have a wonderful evening.
Take care, everybody.
All right. We'll see you. Thank you.